This year, I'm gonna take a little less granular view. And I'm hoping to do it at the 10,000-foot level as we look down on the budget. So with that, basically, what I want to do is I want to uncover three things tonight. And when I talk about budget development, we're really talking about revenues when I say that. So I want to take a look at revenues, I want to look at expenditures, and then if we have a little bit of time, I want to compare our expenditures with a group of districts. So we're gonna look at some demographics. Revenue caps have been around for about 25 years. So most of the board members are very, very familiar with them. The one thing that you have to remember is it's a revenue limit, it says nothing about expenditures. So we aren't limited on what we spend, and that's how we can use some fund balance, we can accumulate it, spend it how we want, it just regulates how much revenue we can generate. And it's basically two things. It's prior year spending and student enrollment. It's that simple. You know, we can get into the formula and everything else, but I think just to remember, student enrollment and prior year expenditures. Enrollment's the biggest piece of it. So this is out of Forecast Five, we're looking at our historical as well as future enrollment. We're using the enrollment projection model within Forecast Five's FiveCast. So it's similar to what we did with the Applied Population Lab study. We're looking at a five-year kind of survival. So we're looking at historically, where have our kids gone once they enter the district? It looks at that and it projects it going forward when we enter what our 4K enrollment is gonna be. So that's how we're doing it. Questions? Okay. This is data that, the next two slides are data that I've taken from what Bobby does for the library census. So to get the whole projection thing started, I'm looking at live births within the district boundaries. And historically, when we look at that, in the 90s, we could capture anywhere from 80, 85, in some years as high as 90% of all the births, five years later showing up in kindergarten. Now, with all the choices parents have, people I think are even more mobile 25 years later, that we're seeing trends somewhere between, I would say, 70 and 75% of our district births five years later showing up in kindergarten. So over this 12-year period, we've got an average of about 195 births within the district, and we're seeing our 4K and kindergarten classes somewhere around 140, 145.
Is it been dropping 2018 because 2018 isn't for you?
Um, we're doing it all on, I think it goes June 30th, so this is data from June 30th. So it would have been, I think Bobby, if I'm not mistaken, it's July, July 1 of 2017 to June 30th, 2018.
Right.
And then we get a little bit of averaging, you know, whether the kids are going early or late. And then, you know, I don't know if you can read this, but Bobby gets it down, it's granular enough that we get it by township. And you can see when you look at that, if you look at the city of Anago, and I don't know if you can see it, they really have the biggest impact. You know, we're averaging somewhere around 130 to 120 births. This year, it's 105. So the city has a big impact. The other thing that's important with enrollment is where are we going with open enrolled in and open enrolled out? So the number on the top would be our open enrolled in, students coming from other districts. The one on the bottom, the red line, is students leaving our district and going elsewhere. And I would, you know, we've often talked about being a destination district. I think this is an area where we really need to focus, you know. If we can, we're estimating in the budget model that we've put together tonight, that we're gonna have a difference between students coming in and students going out, a net negative of 80 students. And I think that's an area where we should be looking to close the gap. You know, and Hoot &amp; May as a business manager suggests that, but that would be one area where we would be looking at. Okay, this next graph is one you've seen before, it's in the Budget Book. It's showing the trend of our revenue limit over time. And what's important about this is when you look at Fund 10 and Fund 27, so essentially, how we operate a district without grants. 83% of better of our budget is being controlled by this, and you can see how it's declining over time. Well, we've lost a lot of students over time. So this is a graph where we're looking at the impact per student, the revenue limit authority per student, comparing Anago in the blue with the state in the red. So you can see there in, what is that? I think that's 2011, 2012. That would be Act 10. And if you look at Anago, prior Act 10, we are now getting there several years later, where we've got the same revenue per student after Act 10. The other thing that's important is if you look at this and you look at the title, it's including exemptions. So what are exemptions? The, within the revenue limit formula, I'll get too technical, there's a hold harmless provision that says no district should have less money than they had in the prior year. There's like a little safety net, and they call that hold harmless. Then there's a declining enrollment provision, that as we're dropping, they give us one year to make the adjustment to prepare for that loss of revenue because the students are bored. Then finally, there's an exemption now this year for, or last year, for parental school choice program. So when we have taxing authority under the revenue limit for parental school choice, that is one of the exemptions that's now a part of our per pupil cost. The other thing is if we would have passed an operating referendum, that would also bump up our limit. So to give you an idea of what we're talking about when we look at those with exemptions, our base revenue with no exemptions prior to the start of this year was $9,275. You heard the low revenue limit ceiling, where the governor is allowing over the next, I believe, four years to go to $9,400 to $9,800. That's gonna drop, increase our revenue limit authority. How it's gonna affect Anago is that that hold harmless provision, it will directly impact that because we're gonna be able to generate more money, so our hold harmless provision is gonna be less. And our revenue limit authority per pupil, although it will go up, it's not gonna go up very much because of that hold harmless provision being the buffer that is already built into the model. So we're gonna see a delay. Like this year, our hold harmless provision would be about $400,000. This year, it's 190, because we're going from $9,275 to $9,400. So we're gonna see a little bit of a delay. But that base revenue without any exemptions is still key. It means we're gonna get more per student. And eventually, hopefully, our declining enrollment will lessen, our rate will lessen, and it should mean more money for us in the future. Questions?
How does the exemption work with a parental choice? We get more money if it goes to the easier?
So JD, I actually called DPI when I saw this chart, because when I put it together off of last year's spreadsheet, I actually had a dip for this current estimate for this year. And when I got the spreadsheet from DPI, it's pre-populated. I called them up and said, "You've got something wrong in there." Well, we have 300,000 divided by the 2,300 kids, and you can see that we're, that's tipping that up from the prior year, because it's something new that we hadn't had. So it's a straight in and out. We're gonna tax for it, and we're gonna turn it right back over through, it actually comes out of our last equalization fee payment that we get at the end of the year.
So it's hurting us less than we thought it was gonna be?
We're becoming the taxing authority, and whether that's hurting us or not, that's not for me to say.
But it would make our tax rate go higher, correct?
Correct. So within this revenue limit, we're gonna have local responsibility, and we're gonna have state responsibility. And the state's portion of the revenue limit is called equalization aids. And all you really need to know is it's really based on what they pay us, or what they contribute is based on how wealthy our district is and how much we spent in the prior year along with the number of students that we have. So, and again, if you're interested in learning about equalization aids and you've heard primary, secondary, and tertiary aid, I'd be happy to go over that with you and show you exactly where we fall in the formula, but that's really a little bit outside the discussion tonight. Okay. So the first thing, when we look at equalization aids, they wanna know how wealthy we are. And this is a graph of our wealth, and they measure, the state measures wealth in real estate value, equalized value per member. So for every student, how much real estate do we have behind them? And the red line is the state's average, the blue line is our average. The takeaway here is if nothing else changes with declining enrollment, and even if our real estate stays the same, our students over time will appear to be more wealthy, which will reflect over time will mean we will get less aid, all things being equal.
We will be more wealthy?
Because we have fewer students divided by the number of dollars of real estate. Tim, what would an example of all of this be? Let's compare, just not even apples or oranges, apples to kumquats. Us Delco. Delco is a very property-rich district because they have a lot of landlords up there, and they're on eggs. So their property values are higher than what they are. So they're gonna be considered to be a wealthier district, so they're gonna get less state aid, don't we, what? On a percentage basis. And that's exactly true, Mike. And what's important about that is you'll hear legislators complain, or you'll hear citizens complain, that the equalization aid formula is broken. The formula is not broken. It does exactly what it's supposed to do. It divides the state's pot of money per student by how much real estate's behind those students. And it does it very well. But people don't agree that that should be a measure of community's wealth. So what the legislature, we're gonna talk about it a little bit, but what the legislature has done is under the revenue limit, there was an inflationary calculator built in it, and it was called the per pupil adjustment. They eliminated that, they froze that in 2015, and they now are adding revenue on a per pupil categorical aid outside the revenue limit. So what it's doing is it's taking it out of the equalization aid formula, and it's giving it to all districts. So we receive, we're gonna receive about $1.5 million in per pupil aid outside the revenue limit. And so essentially, what it's doing is it's giving all schools a little piece of the state aid pie. And whether that's fair or not, that's what it's done, because the legislator, legislatures, politically, that was in their best interest to do that.
Would you testify to that, Blue Ribbon Commissioner, when you send in your comments, is the gist of what you were hoping they'd do?
Um, what, JD, what I often hear a community saying is, "Why do our taxes go down if you continue to need more money? Why can't you just keep our taxes the same?" So what I suggested to the Blue Ribbon Commission is that they looked at a model where we were building in some level to hold taxes relatively constant. You know, the argument could be made is, we're saying we're dropping taxes, and we'll get to that at the end, when actually our equalized value just keeps going up and up and up. You know, so the average taxpayer is still paying their fair share or more. So that was my suggestion to the Blue Ribbon Commission. I haven't heard any output from the committee yet.
Tim, what happens to property, like managed forests, or farmland preservation, or land use assessment? Like farmland gets, as long as you're using it for farmland, it's taxed at a different rate?
Andy, we have something, and I don't, I can't answer the details of that question, but what I see is I see where our, like, if you look on our revenue, if you look at our revenue summary, and if you got to the detail where you were opening up your Treasuries Report and you saw what was coming in, you'd see PLT payments, and I call them PILT payments. It's payment in lieu of taxes. And I have no idea how that gets generated, but we receive payment in lieu of taxes. And I think they're coming from the municipalities, the townships that have managed forest crop in their land. And I can double-check on that.
Or they can come from the township, they might.
They might have came in and looked, yeah, I'm not sure.
Probably might have did it from the state and then passed it.
Yeah, yeah. So the important thing is we have this cap, this revenue limit, and there's really two sides. And it doesn't really matter, I mean, we have the authority to tax to a level, and it's either gonna be state aid that we're gonna receive and taxes, one or the other. So if, if for whatever reason we spend less in the prior year, our local taxes could go up because we have the revenue limit authority to do it. So that's the revenue side of the equation. Oh, I forgot this slide. This has been kinda interesting, a little over time. So you do see swings in what the state is paying, but we're the classic district with two-thirds. You know, we're essentially one-third local, two-thirds state, yet that is very old time from our local taxes being as little as 28% to as high as 38% over the last 10 years. One other thing, within the revenue limit, we have this prior service, and I don't want to go into detail, it's on page 27 of the Budget Book, there's a whole discussion about it. Essentially, it's obligations that were due to WRS. That's under the revenue limit, we've got a couple of years to go. Once that has been paid off, we'll have an additional $300,000 to spend under the revenue limit. Okay. So with the revenues, there's really three sources of income. We've already talked about state and local, and then the other source is really the feds. And I think that represents over 93% of our revenues, and that's really, as a board member or even as a citizen, that's really the, where our money's coming from. And again, we're looking at Funds 10 and 27. So let's take a look at it. On the local level, now, these are coming right out of the Budget Book, I blown it up a little bit. You're gonna look at our revenues. The only thing you need to know at the local level, we've got some student fees, we've got sale of a construction house, we have local taxes that are $7.5 million. Okay, at the state level, there's only four buckets of money that are coming from the state. Okay, the first one is, you'll see it, and the reason I bring this up is, board members, you often will see this on your monthly Treasuries Report, and you're gonna see a source where, you know, it'll say state sources. So the $205,000 is transportation aid and common school library aid. Then the big one is equalization aid. And when you hear that Anago is a poverty-aided district because of our free and reduced lunch, we're getting $194,000 in addition to equalization aid as part of our state aid package, okay? One near and dear to Kelly's heart is AGR.
We'll hear more.
It's a half, half a million dollars. Then the other one that we're getting is this per pupil aid, and it also includes this year $160,000 of round one school safety grant monies. At the federal level, it's pretty simple, too. We basically have three important buckets of money, and that first one is gonna be, you know, almost $250,000, and that's for Title II and IDEA set aside. Then the next one there is Title I, and then we get a little bit of Medicaid reimbursement for our special education where we provide services to those children.
Title II is?
Um, Title I is reading.
I'll talk more about that, Mike.
Professional development, JD. Okay? Okay. Now, when we look at the graph that pie chart was Fund 10 and Fund 27, and we often talk about special education, and when you look at special education, we're using general fund monies to support special ed. And we'll call that transit aids that we're providing to them. But within the special education budget, there's really only two big buckets of money. We got the, we've got the Fund 10 transfer, and then we get state categorical aid or handicap aid for special education, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But it's, it's almost a million dollars. And then, of course, we get IDEA, federal money. So there's only two buckets of money for special education. And when you look at, you've seen this one, I showed this last year, this shows, looking at what we spend in Fund 27, Special Education, and it shows our expenditures over time versus aid over time. And the takeaway here is the state has some certain amount of money, and they get claims. This year, we're gonna spend $3.7 million, we're estimating that we're gonna spend that much money, and we're gonna get aid on it about $967,000. They're gonna give us a categorical aid of about 24% of our expenditures. Okay. We're in the people business. We really have, for board members especially, we have three buckets of expenses: salary and benefits, and purchase services. And we're gonna go into a little bit of detail of what those are, but that represents about 93% of our budget. So when you look at it, here's, here's, this is coming out of the Budget Book as well. This is a report that we have to provide to the state that shows our staffing levels. And board members that were at the meeting our first day back with the teachers, you know how many new teachers we hired. We are still in transition, so I don't have an estimate of exactly where we are for this school year. But if you look at that, our biggest category is as teachers, is what it should be. So really, when you think of our budget, 76% of everything we do is going to salary and benefits. And this is how we spend our budget, on all of these people.
How does that compare to other districts? Is that consistent?
We're, we're gonna, I'm gonna have a couple of slides towards the end that we're gonna talk about, okay? So this one is coming out of page 16 of the book, and I don't know if you can see that very well, I'm gonna point out just a couple of things. Under undifferentiated curriculum, we've got a part-time STEAM coordinator that we've added this year. Under regular curriculum, we've added a math teacher at the middle school. Under the vocational area, we've added a full-time family and consumer ed teacher that is split between the high school and the middle school. Under FIED, this year's budget, we're down to 1FTE and FIED. Co-curriculars, we've added a little bit of money to help offset officials' costs, and we've added money in for transportation because our transportation costs have increased over time. Under pupil services, we've added an additional school counselor. Under school building administration, and you might get questions from the general public, that's essentially what we code Office of the Principal. There's a lot of stuff that gets coded to the Office of the Principal. Everything from field trips to copy machines to special projects that the principals may be doing, and all of their staff and their administrative teams. So to that end, we've added an assistant principal at the high school, so that's gonna be a little bit of an increase. Under page 35 of the Budget Book, Jake put together a list of maintenance projects that he's completed in this past year, and his projects total almost, I think they're at Within his budget area, he has $200,000 built in for site maintenance and for building repairs. In addition to that, he has $270,000 for remodeling. This past year, he had $600,000 built in for the HVAC project. In October, once we know where our enrollment is, our aids have been certified, our equalized values have been certified, I'll be coming to you to amend the budget. And at that particular point, I'll be prepared to recommend that we do take money out of fund balance, and I'll be prepared to present to you on where we're gonna be with fund balance. So my intention at that point would be to look at another $600,000. I believe that's the board's intention, and that's where I'm gonna be going. Questions?
Just getting the last picture on right now. So it's gonna take a little bit once we occupy the building with temperatures and controls, it's gonna be a few weeks, but yeah, for all intents and purposes, done.
So one of the things I haven't talked to the board a lot about is how expenditures happen in special education, and it's really quite surprising. I don't think, from Heidi's perspective, it is, but from mine, when I look at it, when you look at special ed, take a look at this, we're spending $3.3 million in 150,000 function area. And what that is, that's everything to do with cross-categorical, speech and language, special education IEs. That is almost all personnel on special ed. And it's all getting coded, so we get 25% aid on that expenditure. We also have, down towards the bottom there, under the $250,000 business administration, the bulk of that's gonna be transportation, specialized transportation for those students. Okay, this one is a little complicated sheet. We have a Fund 73 trust for OEB, and because we have a Fund 73 trust, I'm required to talk about it at the budget hearing. There are two portions in that Fund 73 trust. One is gonna be a defined contribution, and one is gonna be a defined benefit. The defined benefit were teachers that retired with post-retirement health insurance, and that's in the first column under PMA. PMA manages that account, and it's something that we no longer offer. So the defined contribution is managed by Mid-America, it's in a fixed fund. Last year's yield was only 1.29% interest on it. Combined, we had a beginning balance of $1,708,652.84. Total contributions to the trust were $692,77.59. It was down $172,000 over the prior year. Total distributions in the trust, monies that we paid out to teachers, was $489,828.14 with an ending balance of $1,932,960.5. We're estimating by the year 2022, our contributions going to post-retirement health insurance benefits will be less than $100,000. So on that particular chart, if you look at the PMA, or the Mid-America column, and you go down to additional contributions, and you see $53,397, that was the cost of last year's implementation of reimbursing sick leave.
Which one was it?
$53,397.
So we'll have a cost every year of about that much?
Uh, it's gonna vary, Andy. You know, and I'm hoping that that cost goes up, because if it's going up, it means that it's having the impact of reducing our sick leave and our sub-costs. The last thing I want to talk about, on page 38 in the Budget Book, we're talking about Fund A, and again, we're required to have a discussion about Fund A. And again, we're required to have a discussion about Fund AD. It's something we can levy against the local, your taxing authority. We get no aid on expenditure or the levy in Fund AD. So it's what we use to fund the Aquatics Center. The operational budget of the Aquatics Center is typically $460,000. Within the Fund AD, we levy 270 of those costs, 270,000. If you notice on the slide, we're showing expenditures of $624,525. This year, we just completed plastering of the lap pool at a cost of $100,000. And Jake is in the middle of an LED lighting upgrade project for about $65,000. And we're also doing $20,000 worth of chemical equipment, sanitizing equipment upgrades. All of that money is coming out of the fund balance in Fund AD, which was all put in there by donations. Okay?
How did the $270,000 get taxed? Could you theoretically tax 400? I mean, I'm sure you've thought that, but theoretically, is that up to us to set that?
It's totally up to the board. And what we've done over time is our membership has done a pretty good job of, you know, we've been in the business since 2004. And in the budget book, Mary talks a little bit, Mary Ponasek presents information on how we used it, who's attending. Each month, we include a little budget report on where we're at with admissions, that kind of thing. And it's been very, very consistent what it costs to operate that. And we've gotten pretty good with the equipment upgrades, whether it's the HVAC equipment just a couple of years ago, now with the LED lighting. We've been able to hold costs there, and we've been able to hold the levy, so we don't have to reason.
Can you see there where that has to have earned that?
When we don't, if we ever exceed the donations, we have a very generous community. And in particular, we have donors that really like the pool. And they've been giving literally hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years. And when that stops, as Jake will attest, the pool is an incredibly high-maintenance building. You know, chlorine and water just are tough on stuff. Okay, let's do a little shifting gears. If anybody doesn't have any questions on the community service fund? Okay, get the signal. Okay, this is, and I don't know if you can see this, but this is, I'm looking at demographics. And what's important with this group, Andy's been pretty vocal about comparing us to other people, at least to me. And I took the schools Andy looked at, and I want you to look at their enrollment. And Merrill was the one with the big, which is much higher enrollment. That's really their charter school that's being shown there, so they're kind of an anomaly. But what I wanted to point out with is if you can see these dots, the green dots, that's free and reduced lunch. So when you look at that group, Anago's dot, you know, we're hovering right around 23.5 to 24,000 students in this graph, and our dot is right at 50, 51%. So when you look at four schools within that group, we'll go to the next one. And this is going to get to Danielle's question. Direct costs. So if we look at the four schools in that group, we've got Marinette, Hayward Community, Ashland, and Anago. All have very similar free and reduced lunch rates. And our enrollments are similar. And what this graph is showing is this is showing what these districts, what this group of districts spend on direct instruction. So this is all the 100,000 areas. And the average for the group is 51.3%. And as you can see, the little red line is the average. Anago spends below it. And what I thought was interesting, three of those four schools spend below it. And I don't have charts in here about how these schools perform, but coincidentally, the four schools that are spending above the average have the highest test scores, have the highest report cards out of that group. And so my takeaway is, as we build the budget in the future, we got to look at direct instruction as an area that we have to emphasize. Because it's, I think it can, you know, obviously, if we're spending in the classroom closest to kids, we're going to have the biggest impact on student achievement. Okay, this next one is looking at student ratios. And again, I mean, when you start looking at schools like Rice Lake and I think the other one is Wapaka, you look at their free and reduced, you know, they're 15 to 20 points more than we are. You know, so that's completely different school. But those schools are really achieving, and they have similar budgets, similar expenditures, but they're just spending it on different areas. And this is one where I'm showing student-teacher ratio. And if you look at that, out of this group, the average is 14.3 students for every teacher. Anago is at 15.2.
How does Merrill do it so high? Are their classes really that high, or is that something to do with?
That's all from that charter school's getting dumped in there.
So it's not a real problem?
Correct. And I'm not picking on support services.
Just to say that we have the highest number?
Yes, out of the group, we have the highest number. And then this last one is looking at support services. And I just, again, this is Fund 10 and Fund 27 expenditures. And if you look at, the average is somewhere around 35% going to everything in, that's going to be principals, transportation, utilities, all that kinds of stuff. We're spending 39%. So we're spending more on the operations side of the business and support side of the business than those high-achieving schools are in this particular group. And what I'd like to impress upon the board is we have the tools to look at whatever schools you want to look at. Just let me know if you've got demographics and you'd like to look closer at it, I'd be happy to do it.
Theoretically, like after consolidation, that number should come down. Because we won't have as many custodians there.
Knowing that we only have so much revenue behind every child. Yep. But as we build future budgets, it's certainly something we need to think about. Okay, so what does it all mean? So what I've got there is a six-year history of where we're going with the tax levy, where we've been. The column in orange is what our tax levy was last year. The first column to the right of the orange is what we're estimating this year. And a couple of key things. We don't know what's happening with private school choice, parental choice. I'm estimating 2.5% increase in equalization value. So that means, you know, we're dividing our revenue limit authority by much greater property value. When I talk to the Department of Revenue, we're going to see the city of Anago is probably going to take the biggest jump. And my 2.5, based on July 1 information, is a little bit conservative. So we should see that tweak just a little more.
Is every year 2% above?
Last year, we used 1.
So why we're more popular with here?
Equalized value is all based off of, it's essentially the burden the school puts on the local municipality. So it's the accumulated value of the real estate. And the Department of Revenue, it's all driven off this past year's home sales relative to the assessment.
So if there's lots of home sales in the academy, what?
If the value relative to the assessment went up, the equalized value goes up. If the value goes down relative to the assessment, it's probably going to go down. Questions on that? So all funds, I didn't get a chance to talk to food service. Food services, we've got that outlined. They had a very good year last year. But all funds, later in the board meeting, I'll be asking you to adopt the budget, of $31,214,511. And that concludes my presentation, Michael. Gave you half an hour, and you went 40.
That was a gosh, not bad.
Hey, I do the same thing all the time. Tim, what do you do?
Yes, thank you, Tim.
Where do you go, Tim?
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. We will call the regularly August monthly meeting of the Board of Education. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Bobby, roll complete.
Here, Andy Mary.
Yeah.
Maldeve.
Here.
Mary Newkow. Here. Danny Payet.
Here.
Danielle Youska.
Here.
JD Schrader.
Here.
Jeanne Long.
Here.
And Mike Hollick.
Here. Places with bright smiley faces. All right, first thing on consideration, we'd be looking for motion, please. Don't everybody fight up there.
To hear the board approve of the minutes of the July 14, 2018 meeting, financial report for July 2018, consideration of current bill checks numbered 90459121 in the amount of $126,7590. ACH number 1819000652181900171 in the amount of $871,679.48. And one wire transfer in the amount of $32,345.24 for a total of $130,8062.
Second. Okay, motion by Dr. Deep, Secretary of Commerce, to file. Any discussion on the motion? Fair enough, all those in favor? I, those opposed, motion carries. On to item three, citizens delegations. Anybody sign in, Tim? And we don't have any student representatives this month because we don't have any students right now. But we will, pretty soon. So on to new business, item eight, approval of the fiscal year 2019 budget.
I move the board through the minutes of the committee before a meeting on August 7, 2018.
Okay, motion from Mrs. Long, second from Ms. Youska. Any discussion on the budget as presented? Once again, Tim, very nice job of explaining it as good a detail as you did. Thank you. Any question on the budget? Rena and Bobby, let's roll call both of us.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Maldeve.
Yes.
Mary Newkow.
Yes.
Danny Payet.
Yes.
Danielle Youska.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Jeanne Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
And Mike Hollick.
Yes. We're working document for this year. Good deal. All right, item B, committee of the whole.
I move the board through the minutes of the committee before a meeting on August 7, 2018.
Motion from Mrs. Long, second from Ms. Youska. Any discussion on that?
Has Matun responded yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
And we need them until the Friday?
This week, Friday, close of business, for intent.
Any other questions? Fair enough, all those in favor? I, those opposed, motion carries. LEA, SSA planning update. Kelly, that must be you.
It is.
Wonderful.
So I did some handouts for you, which I know you love. So the first one, if you could just take one and pass it down, is the, with the one that we'll go over first. And then the second one, it's kind of a summary. Um, I think I may have just enough for the board. I think I left you off.
Yeah.
We'll share.
Okay.
Okay. So if you bring attention to the first one, it's called the ESA LEA roadmap. And what that stands for is Every Student Succeed Act. And then LEA is just your federal education agency. So basically, what this is, is the lovely email that I received last year in March saying, here's a new requirement that we would like you to do. And so if you look at it, it's about 19 pages of explicit criteria that the PPI and the federal government are indicating that we needed in our plan. So I printed this out for you, not so that you had to read the whole thing, but just so you know what the specifics are. What I'll review through tonight is just basically an overview of what we're doing. And it fits really well in with tonight because Tim did his budget report. And really, what this is, is a new requirement from the federal government saying that we need to submit a plan to the state in order to determine what is our next five to six years going to look like to meet the state's goal of reducing the achievement gap by half for each subgroup, meaning all of your different demographics and groups of students within the next six years. So this is a very brief overview. And basically, what they wanted to look at is how do we use what we are existing improvement in funding streams? How do we work all of those funding streams together in an action plan to work together for the same goals to increase outcomes? So part of what Tim talked about is all those different pots of money. So what we had to do as a team is really establish, how are we using all of those different funding streams in order to support the same initiatives that research shows are high-impact to increase student achievement? So if you take a look at this kind of image, it really shows very brief overview of the different types of funding. And really, what the state is looking for is how are we going to use those together to create equity for all students, no matter what their needs are, so that we can provide the best education for all of them? So it's really presenting an opportunity of equity for all kids. And really, what the state is focusing on is, they want local districts to support, to submit a plan that really answers these four questions. So the first question that they want you to look at is, how will you provide every student access to a well-rounded education that meets their learning needs in an appropriate, healthy, and safe environment? The second goal that they would like you to have an action plan for is, how will you provide professional growth and improvement opportunities for all teachers, principals, and other school leaders to further high-quality education for all students? The third goal is, how will the district use evidence-based interventions and support services to ensure every student graduates from high school prepared for their college and career plans? And then the fourth objective that we're looking at is, how will we make progress on closing achievement gap for all subgroups in English Language Arts, Math, and so, and Math, so all students meet challenging academic standards? So when you look at the next page, it shows basically a summary of a 30,000-foot field. So we needed to, as the district, look at what is our current reality of all of our data? So what is it showing us are our needs? And really, when we looked at all of that data, it was showing that our students in the area, when you compare students with disabilities versus students without disabilities, English language learners versus students that are not English, or that are English proficient, in all of your different subgroup areas with race and ethnicity, our gap is very large. And in some subgroups, our gap is actually widening. And really, what we're focused on and what our data is showing is, how are we going to improve our universal instruction? Meaning, our very first layer of instruction that all students should be getting. The next steps are, if those students aren't reaching their goals at that level, then what interventions are we going to put in place at the next level of support? And then our highest need area. So our data is showing us is really in that, look at tier three, that really should be a very small, minute percentage of your district. Ours is much larger. So our triangle, so to speak, is upside down. So we really need to strengthen our universal piece for all students before we can start to focus on intervening our way out of a universal instruction issue. So that's what we found from our, from our data analysis. And then the next step was really consulting with all of our And then the next step was really consulting with all of our stakeholders. So this isn't just an administrative plan. This is really, how does our entire district work together? All the different, um, strengths that every single person on our team, all the way from custodians, instructional assistants, all the way up to our district administrator? How are we all going to use what we're currently doing, or collectively, to meet the needs of our students? So, what we did was, we assembled a nimble team. Um, mostly it was comprised of our administrative team, and then we really reached out to our different teams and committees of teachers, um, and parent groups, and different community members that are all working towards the same goals. And then we consulted and developed our plan together. And basically what this is, is the initiatives that we already are having, that we already have in place, that we're currently working on, will be strengthened over the next six years to five years and will, that is the plan that we submitted to the state. So if you look at this visual, it basically shows an overview of just the four, um, the four objectives that the state would like you to develop an action plan for. And then, again, this is very brief. Like you, you saw the nineteen pages of very explicit, um, criteria that the state needs us to answer. Um, but this is just a very general overview of the things that we have in place over the next six years that really we just started last year, um, that, that we're saying these are high-impact strategies that are inclusive again. So, the first is answering question one. What is your well-rounded education plan that meets the needs? Um, and provides appropriate, healthy, and safe environment for all? So, this is all of the work that we're doing with our outside consultants coming in and our professional development plan, working on our high-quality ELA curriculum and instruction pieces. So all of those purchases that we made for curriculum resources and all the work that we're doing with our outside consultants to implement our Reader Leaders Workshop, disciplinary literacy at the secondary, um, looking at what type of instructional delivery models that we're doing with gradual release of responsibility and those types of things. Now, that's a lot of educational jargon, but those are the instructional practices that we're really putting all of our money behind, um, in alignment with whatever those grants guidelines are. And then the, that's the academic side. And then the behavioral side is really our positive behavioral interventions and supports. So, um, among all the social-emotional learning and, um, behavioral health, um, professional development that we're doing, those are the two big areas that we are putting all of our money into to support our students on the behavioral, mental health side, as well as the academic side. Because we know without both of those, they aren't going to see success as they could. The next section is question two. So what are we going to do with our funds to provide professional growth, not only to our teachers, but also to our principals and our school leaders? So that is looking at, as Tim mentioned, so here's my heart of the achievement gap reduction. Um, looking at all of those local grants and federal grants, really developing a detailed action plan around the same pieces. So I will come back to you many times throughout the year and show you exactly what our detailed plan is for AGR, um, money, because it's a lot of money. And you need to make sure that you have detailed goals and detailed ways to measure what you're doing is actually going to produce the student achievement that you're looking for. So that's really what that first block is, is looking at the professional development plan that we do have in place for our literacy instruction, our behavioral strategies, our mental health, um, everything that Heidi is doing with her trauma, or I shouldn't say her, but our trauma team, all the things that we're, that she put into place with Dr. Hartwig. Um, looking at, I'm sure you've heard a lot about Connie. She's one of our instructional consultants that comes in and really works a lot with all of our teachers regularly in special ed, around behavior, on mental health. Um, so all of those details are very explicitly laid out in this, in this plan that we submitted to DPI. I did put all of those details in here, but those are the things that you hear during all of your board meetings that are all fit in this plan. Um, another area that we really focus a lot on is our mentor program. So this is a year where we're beginning to look at what does our mentor program look like? And how are we going to ensure that that is very high quality within the next several years to make sure that our new staff, when they're onboard, and know exactly what initiatives we have and are trained thoroughly to be able to carry those out? So our third goal that we are looking at is our evidence-based interventions and support. So, we are getting together teams. Heidi is really, um, leading the behavioral side. So we're looking at all the level of tiers, um, with what supports we're going to put in place for the students who need more than just the universal. And then again, once they do have tier-two interventions, what do they need, if they need more, what is that going to look like? So you hear a lot about the behavior pathway that her and her teams are working on. Um, and that's really explicitly laid out in this plan, as well as, one of the things that we worked a lot on this summer was in a group of teachers from all stakeholders, from 4K all the way up to 12, we're really looking at what are our layers of support for the academic side as well? Something we haven't had was criteria to determine what the needs are at every level and what those expectations are. So I can bring all of that to you, if you're very excited, I can bring them more. Um, looking at our youth apprenticeship and our co-op training, so all the work that secondary is doing with all of our ACP, which is our academic and career planning. All of those things, when we got together as an admin team, our, our teacher leaders and teacher groups and administrators are working on amazing things. So really what this plan is, is just taking everything that they're all doing and putting it all together to ensure that it meets the needs that we have. Another big component of this piece was our scheme education that we are planning on implementing. So that's going to be very critical. And it was very explicitly laid out in this plan as well, that, that is an area that we are implementing at elementary and middle school, as well as our fab lab and enhancing that at the high school. So our last area is the, how are we going to make progress on closing the achievement gap for all of our subgroups? So one of these is, how are we going to do that with English Language Arts and math? How are we going to ensure they're all meeting the standards? So, one of our big rocks, so to speak, is our professional development. We put a lot of money into professional development, and we are really seeing a lot of roles with our staff and competence and teacher leaders coming out of that, as well as ensuring that they're supported in learning all of these new things. One of the things we're also looking at is our regular data analysis and creating multi-year action plans for how are we actually going to use the data that we have to really drive what we're doing in the classroom and at the district level? Another really large area that you hear more about this year, and you've heard a little about with my AGR plan last year, was the work that we're doing with our English language, um, our English learners. That was one of the areas that was really concerning when we looked at our data, was that the gap was actually widening. So we have a very extensive action plan for how we're going to change that and ensure that that gap closes. The last two areas is really looking at our universal instruction, as indicated by our data, is one of the areas that we need common curriculum resources and common instructional practices to really boost our student achievement at the, from the bottom up. And then as well as our family engagement. So one of the things that Heather has done an amazing job with is really heading up our PTO and our community groups. And they, when this was presented to them, um, they were very excited to hear all of the things that the district is doing. So we're really looking at, um, vamp, revamping how we engage with the community and how we get parents and families involved, and how we communicate two ways, instead of just talking at them, how do they become part of the process of working with us to build plans? So, on the last page, we had a meeting, um, Lisa Nine from DPI on August 10th. And it said, and we had Wendy, who is the head of, check the title one, presenting to us. And she did a, um, presentation showing that out of, so every district had to submit a plan. And so for their federal funding was released to them, it had to be submitted. So she said that as of August 1st, only 30 were approved out of 390 plans. So that's only 8%, and Anigo was one of them. So, yeah. So, to those, every single person on our team, you included at schoolwork, you've made many decisions that were very difficult. And, um, it just shows that we're really on the right track because I, I believe in that we're, it was just amazing. So, really it is a collaborative effort and it's just promising that we're doing the right work, so. That's it. You guys have any questions? Look forward to the outcomes.
Our fancy forecast by thing that we started trying to do?
Yes.
Someday we're going to do our monitoring reports with that from one of your.
Yes.
Since, did the data go in okay?
So, we're still working on building dashboards. We have a lot of data in. But Julie, our Dr. Sprague, myself, Tim, we all met with Jason just recently and looked at some more ideas for different dashboards, looking at really kind of expanding it on more of what it even was. So, we're looking at, looking at a multitude of different ways that we can measure what our district is doing. Not only from the student outcomes piece, but also from the implementation piece. And then looking at how do we align that to our college and career readiness and redefine minority standard? So, it's work, it's a work in progress, but it will be, we will be using it.
Jeanne, what we're, we're trying to do is, um, communicate via Infant Campus is the student information system. And we're using five labs to do the data analytics. And we have to automate that process so that we're not spending life to get that data in. It was a lot of manual entry, and we, we know that that's not sustainable. So, we've got to build the interface to automate it.
Are teachers complaining that they got to type all that extra stuff in?
They weren't the ones typing it in.
Comes out, I think, will come out.
Yeah. Yeah, they weren't the ones typing it in.
Yeah.
But what we, what our goal is, is for teachers also to be able to use IC data easier. That's one of the things that we're hearing is, we, there's data in so many different places that they can't easily use it, and we know that we need to make their lives easier, um, instead of harder. So that's one of our goals. And one of the things that Jason said to us was, I believe we met with him maybe a week and a half ago, and he said that they had a meeting with the CEO of Infant Campus coming up later that week to look at how do they automatically pull it from there? So that would be a huge piece if they can get that. And he said that was promising. So, I have a meeting with him scheduled next week, to be able to look at how do we continue on that path? So I can continue to give you guys updates, but we'll definitely be using it.
Good deal. Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks.
Alrighty. Uh, item D, seclusion restraint report. Heidi.
The fun stuff. You should have a report attached, um, so if you have any questions about it. Um, the trend from last year is that they, um, have gone up. But that's because we were not, as I explained last year, we were not reporting them correctly, um, or not at all, or defining what it meant. And so we've been working a little last year to make sure that people know what a seclusion restraint is, and what the law is regarding how we have to document that and to prevent it. Um, and so with all of the work that we're doing in our behavioral health and our non-battle crisis intervention, and, and all of that, hopefully, I would say we'll probably see another year where it's higher. Um, if you notice, West only had four, and I know that's under-reported. And so, we will probably see more, uh, but then we should see it go down. I mean, that's the hope goal, is that we'll have less and less seclusion restraint. Because it's not good for kids.
So basically, resuppliance, pre-valley, none, no occurrences at all?
Yeah, they don't, they, um, don't have, yeah, I, I would say that's accurate. Now, one thing that we are training staff on though, is that, um, if you prevent a student from going where they want to go, you're restraining them.
That isn't a string, yeah.
So, it's about the documentation and teaching them what we, what you should and shouldn't do when you're putting your hands on. It, it, it should be used in very, very danger to self, or danger to others. And, I mean, immediate danger. And so, training them on other ways to de-escalate and be proactive. But I would say that's probably accurate. Did they probably have a couple where they dragged a kid from recess by their hand inside? And the kids, maybe, but I, I, I don't question that. It's very valid, and it wasn't you. And at the high school, middle school level, most of the time, the kids, they just, okay, go. They're not going to restrain at high school. I mean, if anything, they'll call the police and have them be involved if necessary, so.
How do the children that aren't involved, um, how does this affect them? Like the, with the majority of the students? Like what do we, I don't know, I just think of things Lillian came home and said last year and how it was bothering to her, and like how, how will we protect those kids too? You know, like emotionally, from some of these things that are going on? I don't know how. Does anybody understand what I'm saying?
I would say that, that's a really loaded question, Danielle. And I feel like, um, the work that we're doing with Dr. Hartwig and the work that we're doing to, um, to reduce and to, to reduce incidences of escalation is where our staff, we need to train them to, you know, we know better, so we do better. And how we create communities in our classrooms, this should be a last resort.
Mm-hmm.
Period. And if, if a child needs to be restrained because of that, generally there's things that have been done or should have been done prior to that, like removing the classroom before you.
Even get to it.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just telling you the honest truth, that that's, um, you know, then you talk about it, and you talk about it with the child. I mean, it's very traumatic for me when I've had to restrain kids. It's, it's traumatic for that child. This is not, it's, it's not something I take lightly, and it's not something that staff should take lightly. And we have to do better at that prevention piece and that understanding piece. So, I can't, I can't say that it hasn't been effective, that then people need to talk with kids about it. And about how they feel about it, and how you prevent that in the future.
What's the technical definition of seclusion? I mean, just if you said it to your.
Seclusion would be if you are preventing a student from, um, being with her peers. So, we have seclusion rooms, um.
Not if you just say, go sit outside the door for five minutes or something?
No, and if they go willingly, no. But I wouldn't say that that's the best, that's not a good strategy to sit a kid out in the hallway, but that's another story. But, um, it's not, uh, it's not a, um, it's not secluded. I mean, if you prevented them from coming back in, then you would be secluding them from their peers. But just the act of saying, go sit out in the hallway in the naughty chair, now I disagree with that, but doesn't, is not a seclusion, so.
Like, you know, I guess like, um, with our counselors and stuff, are there, I mean, I'm assuming like, in counseling, they probably, do they have conversations about these kind of things to help, like, understand all the different personalities and how to, just in general for kids?
Well, and that's part of what we want to implement with morning meeting and, um, our community, just creating culture of community with our students. Um, and also with our counseling, the reason that we added a counselor was because we have needs. And not just, this isn't just the second tier and third tier. This is how do we, you know, we're going to have counseling sessions weekly, not every other week. And we're going to have counselors in two buildings versus three buildings. And trying to be proactive and preventative and to be able to have conversations. And if Lillian came to them and said, you know, that really bothered me, and maybe it bothers only because she didn't like to see her friend be hurt. Not even just, you know what I mean, like that's, I, I mean, I'm not saying that that happened, but you know, how, how they have those discussions, I mean, we should have a, I mean, I've been in situations where I've seen, um, kids walk in and they're put in the naughty chair, and every kid knows that it's the naughty chair. That happens, that happened here. And that's what can't happen. And so, it's just, when we know better, we do better. And we just have to keep doing that. So, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. Any questions? Generally, we've met all the, the disciplines there. Alrighty. HR consulting.
That is me. So when I interviewed with you, and if you were looking closely at my face, you do remember, um, one of you indicated that, um, HR person had resigned and had not been replaced. And I felt my heart kind of leap into my throat, but, you know, I was new. So, what I've come to understand is that Melanie Ryan, our HR specialist, has tremendous capacity. I am highly encouraged about where we are headed with human resources, but she is not fully trained, so having capacity is not the same thing as firing on all cylinders. So, um, I am not in the position, nor do I think it's necessary that I approach you about replacing Tina Verhagen's position. I don't think we need to. Um, instead, I think we've come up with a wonderful compromise. And that is, I happen to know a very solid human resources director who's newly retired from the Wausau School District. So I've worked with him for almost 20 years. And, um, you know, he is very willing and interested to mentor Melanie and help her improve that capacity. Right now, she's a department of one. And I am highly uncomfortable with that. Because while we all chip in, it's just too much for somebody who is not fully trained. So, what I would like to. So what I would like to suggest, and you see the draft there of the employment provisions for Mr. Jeff Bress. And I would like to suggest that we have a motion and you approve this, knowing that we would not exceed that $25,000 limit yearly. And he is so, in my opinion, he's just so experienced and so well-versed in the work that we need to have done, that all of us collectively could mentor Melanie and it wouldn't be nearly as cost-effective as having Jeff on board.
So what is your goal or plan for Melanie when you said that she's not at the spot that you want her to be at? Does she have to have some extra training or is it just hands-on training? Or does she need a certain degree or a certain number of training hours?
Correct. There are two, two certifications that Jeff spoke of. And Melanie is aware and their acronyms escape me right now. So I'm looking to see if my counterpart remembers that.
There, I was looking at, in the letter, Jeff's got a couple of different acronyms behind his name. And one of them is Certified Professional Human Resource Specialist or something. It's a professional designation that he holds. And he's recommended that once Melanie finishes her degree, she pursue that certification.
And he can lead her toward understanding the components of what it would take to become certified.
And how qualified is she for this degree and then thinking of the certificate?
That I can't answer, I'm not certain. But I do know, you know, I watch what she accomplishes on any given day. And she really is only checking in on very significant issues. The day-to-day things she has covered, which I find remarkable.
Right, but the problem is that we are looking at, if that's a requirement for the job, that she have a certain degree, then this application, what timeframe are we looking at? You know, will this gentleman be available for that, say, two, three, four years until Melanie gets to that point? Or, or will it come to a point where a year later he says, you know, I'm done, I'm heading down south? And then where does that leave us? You know, can Melanie with that experience be considered, you know, able to take care of that situation?
Right.
Or then does she have to wait until she gets the degree?
I think she'll become closer to that optimal level, whether she has the certification or not. Right now, she's acting alone. But I, I think he will expedite that process where we hopefully have Melanie in a place where she can effectively.
And we do not need that as a requirement, that she have that certification or degree to get to that?
We're doing it right now without. And that, you know, I wasn't, that was a decision made before I arrived?
Right, no, no, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, do we need somebody to, who's certified or has a degree to, to hold that position or not? And if so, what's her timeframe and plan for her eventually?
You would suspect that it'd be even harder to hire someone all the time that would be as good as this person myself?
Well, if I remember correctly, and Tim, you can weigh in on this as well, Mr. Bress used to work for the district.
Correct. He did. Well, when I saw this, I like did a little dance in my head. Because he's very good. And it was a loss when he left. So I was really excited to see this. He's been actually a mentor to me in human resources-related issues. You know, in, when I was building LEADER, obviously, he was district-wide. But I just know how effective he can be and really help us get HR systems in place too. It's a little disjointed right now and we would like it to become cohesive with his guidance.
Yeah, he can write some structuring and things to it, that from his experience. And to your point, well, I don't think he's probably planning on going out of the area too soon. Because if I remember right, his wife is still working for the Wassa School District.
Correct. She'd find him.
Yeah, shook him.
And he's local.
Yeah.
He's from there.
And I must tell you, not that I want it to affect your decision, but you know, Tim and I were, he, he was very humbled and what he said to us is, he's not looking to supplement his retirement. What he's looking for is to help this district and his hometown. And I think he's a little worried about me. He wants me to be successful and he was just really excited to give back to the community. And to have somebody of his caliber at that price, I was doing a dance as well.
On that note, I think the motion that we approved is the employment for Jeff Bress. Second, we came a motion for Mr. Mary, second for Mrs. Long.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
I just one question, do we have anybody in the district that is capable or able to take on the HR position that we already have? I mean, I don't know anybody in the staff.
Not that I'm aware of.
No other qualified?
Bobby, is that your degree or no?
Um, my degree is actually in marketing, but my experience in HR, yes.
Heidi, sorry.
No, Melanie is, we need to grow her. She is amazing, she is sharp, and she's had to take on a lot that doesn't even have to do with HR. And she, she's just so efficient and effective. We, she's, you know, whatever we can do to support her, to move her, I, I've worked closely with her all summer. And she asks me questions that, I, you know, she, it's, it's beyond just this level. She's worth what you're gonna be able to provide her with, Mr. Bress.
So the investment of Mr. Bress will pay us benefits as well?
I, I believe so, knowing what Melanie has produced, just working with her this summer closely.
Any other questions? Bobby, let's do roll call, both please.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Payette?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Holding?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. All righty, let us keep this little train moving along here. Area six board action. Item A, all district administrative guidelines, reading number one. So we have, are we on for a motion to approve the, for first reading? No, I think we just have to look before the board that this is the first reading and the second reading is going to be. So everyone needs to, let me have time, there's an option. Take time to go through the administrative guidelines if you have any questions or comments. And it's, you always have to remember that this is a dynamic document that proving it as-is gets started. You can always go back in and make changes and update as necessary. We have Neola on our side working with us. So if you see something that is of a concern to you and you wanna see changed or more personalized in the district, please advise administration and we'll get it back. All righty. Item B, 2018-2019 academic standards. Kelly, you're up to bat one more time.
All right. So you will find the notice of academic standards. So this is basically an annual notice that has to happen every year, the first board meeting of July. So in looking back, it has been done since 2016, so we're starting fresh. But, so all of the district that student academic standards that we have currently in place are on here. Were your approval and what we'll be doing this upcoming year is really developing a regular cycle of renewal for, and curriculum design, so that each area and content is updated as it should be with a team of teachers in an organized fashion. So really, it's just an annual item that should appear on your agendas every year.
I move the board adopt the 2018-19 academic standards, as presented.
Second.
Kelly, did we adopt, what is it, CSM MAP in the high school, the same year we adopted Common Core? Because that was around for like 20 years right before Common Core, but I don't know it.
So the department, the Wisconsin Department of Instruction adopted the Common Core standards in about 2014-15. So I would imagine that would have been about the same year.
That we adopted that.
That you did CPM. I'm not positive on that. I know it's when you adopted MYMATH at the elementary level. But one of the things that we'll be doing is working closely to really look at all of those areas to determine whether, you know, we, we don't have a, a regular renewal process right now that's been done regularly. So we need to develop that and really look closely at all the content areas, including 4K, all the way up to all the areas in secondary.
You just still hear people complaining about that math program. I thought I Googled it once and it got invented in like the 1980s, but I didn't know it. CPM, one of the high schools weren't for the teachers themselves or whatever.
Yeah. So I don't know the exact year that that was.
I think realistically, JD, if I remember correctly, Common Core came in probably 1515, I think CPM came in 1616.
But I think it existed in California.
Or it probably did, yeah.
And we adopted, that's what I mean. It's just been around, like, it wasn't like built after, no.
So this that you're adopting right now, isn't saying that you're adopting curricular resources of CPM or MYMATH or Lucy Cockens or whatever. This is just saying that the district is adhering to the state standards. So those are just resources that our district uses to reach the standards. And what we're going to really do is develop a process to ensure that those are the best resources that align with best practice as we move forward. But one of the things that we have to do is make sure that our district is using those resources to reach the standards that are adopted by the state. So you're not saying you're adopting CPM tonight. You're saying we're adopting the state standards for math and for ELA.
Could we adopt the Minnesota standards if we wanted to, or is that not one?
I'd go look into that.
I'm just curious.
I don't think the legislature would like that.
Minnesota's got a really good.
Yes, that's good to think of.
Minnesota's or, or Common Core too.
I recognize the DPI that they would look for Minnesota standards.
Yeah.
So, all righty, we do have a motion on the table, the announcement of the academic standards. Any other questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the employee handbook. Let's have a motion first. I move the board approve the 2018-19 employee handbook.
I'll second.
Very good, thank you. Motion for Dr. Deeb, second from Ms. Long. All righty, now, let's have some discussion. Changes. So the changes are for the substitute arrangements in the cyclic link and teacher supervision evaluation. Other than that, it's still intact from previous year? Performance evaluation.
They'll send all their teachers in the district to receive a classroom walkthrough and then non-summer years of the cycle? Is that what that means?
So we wouldn't want, if I'm evaluating the math teacher, for example, I wouldn't want to wait for three years to be in there when it's summer year. You really want to have documentation and a full picture of a three-year cycle.
Okay, I guess I just was confused on the definition of summer year. So that summer year means the two years before the official evaluation?
Correct. So it's, you know, cyclical and you prepare, prepare.
The third year you get a report. The other two years, they just walk through.
Walk through observation. Smile away.
Smile away.
All righty. Any other questions on that for, as far as the changes? Or any questions on the handbook in general? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Health and Motion Contract.
We contract for our, our physical therapy services for our students with special education.
Have you always had a contract with this entity or was it with the hospital?
It was the, it was whoever was previous to Health and Motion. Prior to that, I'm not sure. It was, they, I know that Tim person took over Health and Motion, I don't remember what it was. Full physical therapy.
Antico, no, Antico totally, yeah.
Yeah, that's, so we, that was my first year, but then it changed. So it's been the same entity, they just bottomed out.
When I read that, I was a little concerned if we are sort of going that route in place of the hospital's physical therapy and then those people be available at sporting events or not. So that was my concern.
Do we, and, and I'm not really sure, do we, do we contract with a hospital, did you say for the sporting events?
Yeah, the athletic directors are, are trainers, they're trainers. Athletic trainers are.
Is that something that we should look to do bids on in the future? Is for physical therapy? I mean, the one that we have right now, she's phenomenal, I wouldn't want to not have her as long as she's with that company.
Is it still Brenda?
Yeah.
At one point, she worked, we had a physical therapist employed in the district and Brenda was it. And that was, and when she, I think it was when she chose to leave the district that they didn't.
Didn't replace you.
She didn't get replaced. But they're hard, they're hard to find.
Yeah.
And so that's why I think we ended up with wherever she went.
Yeah, and we just don't have the needs to have a full-time, I mean, she was very good.
So we contract, yeah, for those hours.
Yeah, I think in 2009, the person came from like Ryman or Wassa, I mean, they.
And we tried to co-op and, and it was, it was hard for meetings and a lot of, it was hard.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Any other questions on the contract?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion for Dr. Deeb, second for Ms. Newfeld, to approve the contract with Health and Motion of Wisconsin. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, Family Corner Resource Center Agreement.
All right, I believe that's me. Okay, so you have this, you have this attached in your board docs. So what you'll see on there is, this is one of those things that I get a call on, you know, last week and said, are you planning on renewing with us? Our contract was up until the 30th. So one of the things that I really wanted to do was make sure that I reached out to DPI and to our 4K team to look at why are we contracting these services out? What are the components that we need to be compliant with what we have to provide for DPI and for our students? So we wanted to put it on the board for you to have a possible action on. But one of the things before we go through with signing this contract, I really want to look at exactly what these pieces all are. And talking to the consultants that we've previously worked for, she is new into that position and didn't have detailed explanation of what those services were last year.
That was my question, because none of this makes sense to me as to.
Yes.
What exactly are we approving? What services will they provide? I think I need a lot more before.
I agree.
I think this needs to be tabled and brought back with more details.
I agree. And so in talking to the DPI consultant that I worked with, I, I've taught 4K in my past experience and we've never contracted out family outreach. It's always been something that we did as teachers and as, you know, working with our families. So one of the things that I'd like to do is really, tomorrow I have a meeting planned with our 4K team to look at, what is the, what are they currently already doing? Because they may be doing all of these things already that we don't need to be contracting out. And she's never really heard of a district contracting these services out either. So I think we have a really phenomenal 4K team. And these things do not, according to DPI, need to be done outside of the school day. They can be things that are done with our. They can be things that are done with our families during the school day. It's just purposeful activities and looking at how do we document, um, how do we document alignment with how we're engaging our 4K families specifically? So really, it's not anything new or additional. So I agree, I didn't want to move forward.
And I didn't understand why a hospital would be providing teaching to 4K students and that.
Yeah.
You know, we used to have a family resource center.
Yep.
That was through UW, was it?
I don't know who it was through, but it was in the first floor of the old vocational school.
It was still, I think it was still through this.
And it was, um, what's her, what's her name? Deb Gallenberg was the person. And you go pick up baskets, books and.
Um, Deb. Yes. I participated. I participated in that prior to school and then I have participated in this with 4K. And it is really nice. You know, we talked about, you know, healthy choices. We made pizza with different vegetables. We made, I remember made stepping stones and just having those different interactions and conversations, but they were very poorly attended. I mean, a handful and they'd, during the day though.
They were during the day, weren't they, during the day though?
Right after school. They would be at like three fifteen. It'd be right at three fifteen and, or whatever for, until like four-ish. And I mean, we did swimming. There's a lot of cool stuff that they did, but that's a lot of money.
For, for the amount of attendance and what I experienced.
Yes. Yes, and when you look at the really, the intent of parent outreach, it's really to build relationships with the school. Build relationships with those families that this is their first experience with school and, um, really build relationship with the teachers and the students. So in looking, there is a lot of different options for what parent outreach can look like and what DPI expects. And so when I meet with those 4K teachers, I know that they're doing an extensive amount of things. I mean, when you look on here, like, take-home activities, I know our teachers are doing amazing things with that already and planning parent, um, parent activities. So once I meet with them and I can communicate with you further as far as what we want to look at. But I agree, we need to make sure that we really look at, just because we've always done something doesn't necessarily mean that we should always just.
And you know, you look at, sorry, um, like, it was really nice having the interaction with the teacher too and with this and that kind of organized it. But maybe you do something from eight until eight-thirty in the morning when you're dropping off your kids and the parent can go into work a little bit later or whatever.
Yes.
Cause really the core, it's, it's, it's really about being with the students and the parents and the teacher.
Yeah.
And not being with the same three or four people that attend.
Yeah, yep, and those are all different options. And really what, what DPI is looking for is meeting the needs of our parents. Not necessarily just doing the same things because that's what you always did. So it could change your year based on what the needs of your, your teachers have and what their parents, what their needs are. And looking at folding a lot of it into the social emotional work that Heidi's really leading up. All that stuff fits in. So we're doing a lot of work already that, um, I, I think that could be, yeah.
I give the consensus opinion of everybody on the board here is that this is not the time to bring this forward to the board, that we need to do a little more research on it. So I agree with Dr. Deep's suggestion that we put this one on the table and bring it back next month with a little more research on it or.
Right.
Bring it back when you actually want it to do it.
Right, and consulting with Dr. Sprague also, you know, we are both new in this position, so we didn't necessarily just wanna not bring it to the board and then it's something that you always have done, but we wanted to keep you informed as to this, yeah.
That's okay. You don't have to feel bad about it. No, we had that you did and we had this discussion.
This is something we're looking at. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So let's bring her back next month, or whenever you're ready with more details. Okay? Very good. Alrighty, then we will go on to item F, the Langley County Boys and Girls Club Agreement for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Okay, motion from Dr. Deep, second from Ms. Youska. Uh, let's have some discussion. What do you think?
Yeah, I think Amy, Amy discussed it or gave us a, a great job.
Amy's up there.
Hi. We talked about, so far at the committee, the whole meeting about the preparing of the after-school program instead of us, um, taking on a two-hour commitment with our staff and organizing activities, snacks, activities. There's a lot of prep related to those additional things. And really trying to encourage our students to be a part of the Boys and Girls Club is something to be participating in other activities and great field trips in the summer and different things. So Angel, who heads up the Boys and Girls Club, is offering these students a reduced rate to be a member, um, to end up able to participate in those other things too. So, um, they're going to take on some of that organization, the transportation of the students, uh, so it's a win-win for us. We are, we'll house the students for one hour for an academic power hour and then the students will then make a choice at four-thirty, are they going to walk? With two Boys and Girls, Girls Club, um, staff members will be at the middle school, are they gonna walk? And then maybe leave at five-thirty with their bus transportation or are they gonna get picked up at four-thirty at the middle school? So just a slight adjustment.
So do you have any students enrolled in it as of now or?
Not right now, but we don't usually start until a couple of weeks in. We also run a before-school program that starts at seven in the morning because some students get dropped off and that's run primarily by Bonnie Knight for it. And so once school kind of starts, that's when kids kind of start to realize, hey, I'd like to do that because my friend's doing that and.
Keeps them on the pro.
Yeah.
So the before-school program begins a couple of weeks into the year too?
Yeah, it'll probably start a little bit sooner than the after-school program, but.
So, any other questions? Uh, this one concerns a little bit of money. Bobby, let's do roll call votes, please.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Jenny Paya?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yeah.
Ginny Long?
Yes.
Mandy Mary?
Yes.
Jess Tamed?
Yes.
And Mike Bolden?
Yes, me too. The doctor. We totally agree. Alrighty, very good. Thank you, everyone. Now we are on to item G, the Medical Advisor Agreement for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Motion to exclude. But now I would like to discuss that.
And that's why we're gonna do that. We have a motion from Dr. Deep, second from Mr. Paya on the Medical Advisor Agreement. Discussion.
Yes, um, and I think we have our principals here too. My question is that when you look at the prescriptions will be written for epinephrine and glucagon, I understand that. Why are we not talking about Narcan with the opioid overdose?
No, I think Dar- Darlene did just bring that up this year, that the high school and the middle school, we're going to stop that now.
But I think we need to have that in here.
Oh, is it not in the language? She did say at our first day training interview that that will be at the middle school, they swat.
Those, those should be, and, um, I think I'd like to recommend that we have, um, a one-hour sort of session for, uh, and I, I did talk to Darlene, uh, so that I, if she was here, I didn't want to blindside her, but I did talk to her and told her that I'll bring this up. I asked her who will be trained in the Narcan nowadays, you know, it's not like they prepare that you have to give a shot. This is, you know, twist it off and you just spray it in the nose. Some of the things that we are not quite aware of is, you know, some of the newer, the carfentanil and things like that, which are quite toxic and can even be absorbed through the skin. If you reach over and, and you're trying to get some help for the, for the person who's affected, you as the good Samaritan unfortunately can be tox- can develop the toxic exposure. So I would like our school district to strongly consider having a session, not just for the administrative staff or the staff in the office who Darlene was thinking of. I think having a session for all your teachers, all your staff members might be a good idea to consider. You can talk to the sheriff's office and the emergency room at the hospital. They do have some of these sessions where they'll come and they'll just tell you what are the signs to look for and, you know, um, how do you just use the Narcan and, you know, it's over the counter. This is something that, um, she said, for example, she said, well, in the middle school, we're gonna train the two principals. What if the two principals are not there, they're at the, off at the central office and something happens? And in a situation where it could be life and death if you're wasting the ten, fifteen minutes trying to find the two or three people in a school you want to train and if it's their day or they're not there. If you could have a session sometime in the next couple of months, um, with our emergency responders and ER physician and the sheriff's office. I think it's, um, Danlock and, um, they, they do a good show of coming over, they'll talk about this common dress of abuse, the things to look for. You know, if you see something like this in a student, what to do in this situation and how easy it is to use Narcan. I think you need to have that stopped in your school's office. Jay, I got something.
Yeah, I, I think that that's a, uh, excellent thing that we probably all, all overlooked. Um, so I really appreciate that and I think that a good, uh, platform to start that and really roll that out in a quick and efficient manner would be to bring that back to our lead group, which consists of Aspire's Hospital, law, both law enforcement's, uh, emergency medical, all the school districts in our, our county and, uh, the emergency response teams in our county. So I think that that's a great thing. So we have a meeting next week on that. So I'll throw that on the agenda and we'll see if we can expedite that.
Thank you. If you accidentally, let's say it's not opioid, is, does Narcan hurt somebody? Does like, let, maybe they mistakenly give it to them because they think they're having it and it has nothing to do with opioids? Does it have an effect?
No, it can't.
Okay, well, and that's good to know because sometimes people get into a situation where they're like, I don't want to make the wrong choice because it could, you know, whatever. So that's good to know that even if you make a mistake.
Well, it's the same thing if you're, if you're thinking that they have low blood sugars.
Yeah.
You know, if you give them glucagon and, unless they are in a coma that is caused by significant derivative blood sugar, I don't think it's going to hurt to have a little higher sugar for an hour or two.
Yeah, that's good for people to know that.
No questions, please. For the Narcan, is that, is, I thought you said it's over the counter?
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, according to state law, it's, um.
Okay, okay, the reason I ask the question is because looking at this, it does specifically indicate that prescriptions will be written in.
But, but for us to have that in, in the premises, you need a prescription from your physician.
Have a supply.
Oh, okay, now I understand. Thank you. I wasn't clear on that.
In the school district, because if, if you used it on a student and their parent or somebody questioned you. So just to cover your, your.
Gotcha. Thank you. I wasn't clear on that and I appreciate some of this.
Carfentanil, yeah?
What?
Carfentanil, it's, uh, the fentanyl is, uh, uh, medication, you know, the patches for the pain or you give it IV. Or sometimes you use the fentanyl in the sedation. Carfentanil is several times more potent and it actually is being shipped in the mail from China and elsewhere. Very potent and that's the reason, um, usually when you try to reverse the effect of opioid medications, one dose of Narcan is usually enough. And in the Cadoran days, you used to just have an ampoule taped to the, uh, to the IV pole when you were giving people narcotic medications. When that happened, as a member in residence, you just break it open and you push that IV and it's done. But now with this Narcan being available as an intravenous and with some of these potent things, one dose is not enough. You might need, uh, three, four, uh, repeated doses just to overcome that. Primary responders need to be aware of it, that prolonged exposure, if you're trying to do resuscitation of these people, you could put yourself at risk. So having that awareness might not hurt.
Yeah.
So we need some additional language to the agreement.
So, so what you're suggesting is we do put some additional language in the agreement?
If, if that is okay with the board or, um, with the medical director, just to add on, um, having a prescription for Narcan or naloxone.
Just in middle school and high school?
Yes. Just to add that on.
Think we can do that and have doctors have a rest, have you sign it?
So I don't know Dr. Snyder personally, do you?
Well, I, I can talk to him, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Absolutely.
I, I think that would be wonderful. Does anybody else on the board disagree with that?
No.
Okay, then you have the words plus single.
Okay, I'll talk to Dr. Snyder and. Add it on there and.
So then, do we approve with that language tonight or do we need to bring that?
No, I, I think we can approve it and so then with the provision to add that into the agreement, to add on an additional medications as may be seen fit in the future throughout the year.
Well, considering that you did make the motion.
So I can say that, uh, with the provision to add additional medications as may be necessary for the health, the ability of the students.
But you did second, you were in agreement, okay? Very good. Bobby, you got all that?
I think so.
Alrighty, cool. Alrighty, um, once again, since, well, this one is, uh, this is on a voluntary basis, so there are no voluntary considerations. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, uh, on to item H, lunch and milk prices.
Motion to exclude as presented.
Second.
Yeah, uh, motion by Dr. Deep, second from Ms. Newfeld to approve this, uh, yeah, discussion. Well, we, there was some discussion earlier about for the eighth grade.
Correct.
Having it go up and. So are we all good with the numbers as presented? In that case, uh, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Construction Host Materials Bid. Here is a plethora.
I do make a motion to approve, but I think we still are waiting on the drywall.
I don't see the milk price on the last one. I caught it as you were saying I. And it says lunch, meal cost, and I don't know if you wanna, what can you do about that? It says lunch and milk prices. I don't know what to do. It's like, like, milk's not on there. Am I missing it? I don't know, sorry. And I looked, I missed it.
Oh, it's just the meal cost.
Well, in the, in the, it says lunch, and item H, it says lunch and milk prices.
And the attachment is to lunch.
Just the lunch. So I don't know what we're supposed to.
So just leave milk off there?
Yep, the, the motion did say meal cost, it did not mention the milk prices, so.
Don't forget that it's.
So the agenda item was listed.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Okay, no, no, no.
That's all right, that's a good point.
Milk break, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. My recommendation is we have Sarah come in next meeting.
Right, and I'll just get the milk prices from her.
Get the milk prices from her.
Sarah was up and over saying.
And just do add it on the next.
And I don't even think that they've changed. It's just a, um, item that we look at every year and I'll guess, so you're aware of what the milk, uh, lunch and milk prices are, so.
Just, it would be just a good idea to put on the agenda just to, so we can review it. Add them in.
I don't think we need to necessarily.
Right, just so you know. Yeah, I'll just get it, yeah.
Alrighty, and let's get back to the construction host materials that we'll be looking for in motion, please.
I mean, the board approved of all the bids for the supplies made of the construction project. Electric center sixty-four ninety-five, uh, electric supplies, engine plumbing and heating, thirty-nine forty-eight for plumbing supplies. Lam lumber seventy-five ninety-seven and six cents for kitchen cabinets, bathroom vanities and countertops. Lam lumber fifty-eight for heating eighty-two cents for windows and doors. And lam lumber for twenty thousand six hundred twenty-eight thirty-eight cents for lighting materials.
I'll second.
Motion from, uh, Dr. Deep, second from Ms. Long. Any discussion, question?
So how's it work? Do you wait on the drywall till somebody puts in a bid?
Well, hey, Michael, that was gonna be my question. Since the drywall bid is typically below what we require for bidding, can we go ahead and, um, no one? can we go ahead and no one bid the drywall? And so we're going to send the packets out to contractors that have bid the school project in the past. And typically that, that bid would be somewhere between six and seven thousand dollars to just go to have Jordan be able to go with a low bid to the drywall.
Low bid not to exceed some number?
What was the bid?
I would say that the number would be ten thousand because if it's over ten thousand, we have to bid it.
Tim, okay.
Oh, I didn't know you were here.
Yeah. Drywall out of Lawson received a bid for forty-eight thousand dollars. Approximately, there was some change and stuff in there. I guess what I'm looking at is even if we go with the inflation that all of the other contractors kind of had on their bids, even if we approximate kind of the estimate of fifty-eight thousand, I'm sorry, fifty-eight hundred dollars. I think I said fifty-eight thousand earlier.
Yeah.
Fifty-eight hundred dollars. All right. I think we'll definitely be in the ballpark of where it's going to expect to be this year. Tim, I don't know if this would be the appropriate time to, we have to discuss what we're going to sell the house for?
Um, no, we'll put that together, you and I will work on that. And we're going to make sure we cover our costs.
Right.
Okay.
Was there any other questions? For the last meeting, we did a lot of awesome advertising and stuff. A lot of good things going on Facebook. If you guys want to check that out. Lisa, I've been working with Lisa from the journal about a write-up.
As a matter of fact, just this morning on my way to work, I was listening to the radio station out of Rylander. And they had on there that the Unified School District Medical was looking for offers on the construction house. Please contact Jordan Cradson, give them your phone number.
That's awesome. I submitted that probably a month and a half ago and I never heard anything in return. First of all.
You're lucky I was moving to work late, otherwise I wouldn't have heard it.
That's cool.
So, nice job there.
So at some point, we talked about we weren't going to do the construction house unless we had it sold and pre-sold.
But not this year.
Well, I don't know if Andy was there for the discussion when he came to the committee of the whole last month.
This was the last meeting.
It was a considerable that we did.
No, maybe it was the meeting before.
It was the last one, a great year, I'm sorry.
It's our last meeting, I think.
Yeah.
June twenty-sixth? Yeah, that was the one I lost reception in.
So, so it wasn't happening this year?
No, I think we're going to give them.
Give them one, because they were able to sell it, actually sold both, the one from the previous year and last year. Both got sold and stuff and moved.
And Jordan's new in this position.
Yep.
So it takes a while to acclimate, but we were going to go on a year by year case basis.
Thank you.
And Jordan's completely revamped the drawing from the year prior. And to his credit, he's done some significant improvements with just the overall rough design, the kitchen layout. It's a pretty nice looking floor plan that I think hopefully will get people interested in bidding on. And we're getting going earlier than we have in the past.
When the kids were here and you did that presentation that night, didn't we talk about them having actually work at, at a site? Or was that when it was pre-sold? Like if it was pre-sold, remember they talked about if it wasn't like.
Well, I think that discussion at that time and Jordan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the discussion was looking at the different options for the future. Instead of building it here, building it on a, the site already. Going, going off the school grounds to build it, possibly looking at a tiny house or something or some different configurations, just as an effort to keep the program alive.
Correct. I actually, lately I've been managing the lines this previous Friday. I met with Mark from the city, I forget his last name.
Dustin Dumb.
Yes, yes. I talked with him and he was very excited to spend a heat or bulk program and what I'm trying to do with it. He wants to try and organize something where the vacant lots from the city. Somehow they're going to, they want to work with us and potentially work with ADTAT and try and keep that thing going one way or another. So the city backs the program.
So the reason that we decided to go with Willam for the windows, even though they are a little higher, was because they are local contractors?
That's a huge plus, but actually Goldie and Goldie only bid the windows. They did not supply a bid for any of the doors. So that bid, even though it's a difference of approximately six hundred dollars or so.
Didn't have the doors.
There's no doors in there.
I have doors.
So. Yeah, that's what that comes from.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for reading the materials. So the only thing that we really need to possibly have the motion amended to is.
To include.
To include the drywall bid not to exceed.
Should it go in six thousand dollars? Is that okay?
I think that, I really feel that would be enough to cover it.
I'd like to stay with the bidding requirements to give us a little latitude. You know, it's nice to get this thing locked up in the next thirty days. And if we can get somebody to bid on it. You know, and I think we should, between Jake, myself and Jordan, figure out what the bid is competitive with.
Or are you going to give us drywall?
What do you want to set?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
That's the normal bidding process.
I just don't want to, you know, we're, right now, we're asking for quotations for it. You know, if you, if the board wants us to take it back to September, we can.
No, that's okay.
It'd be nice to let, let Jordan work with the contract and get it in a dollar and let's go.
And we'll give it there.
Okay. So, once again, your motion.
Okay, in addition to this, I'll make, I'll amend my motion to say that we should also include a bid for the drywall not to exceed a dollar amount of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Gene, you seconded it?
I'll second.
You're good with the amended motion, alrighty. Okay, any other discussion?
Just, do we have a good number of students attending this class?
Uh, currently, there's ten signed up. Um, part of that, I feel, is I'm taking over the class now, or I'm taking over the prerequisite course, carpentry. So last year and obviously the year prior to that, before I was even involved, the class was split up between two teachers that did not teach a construction program. I just feel having a pathway now where the kids are going to get to know me and the carpentry, which is a prerequisite, and then they'll get to build the house with me. I think that's only going to strengthen the program.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Bobby.
Mary Nuko. Yes. Danny Payet?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Meehan?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
And Mike Holden?
Yes.
Jordan, go build the house.
Thank you.
And you need to market it to the students too now.
Last year, I had a student that was seriously interested in it. He was a senior. He, I don't know, it ended up falling through, but he came and took a tour on his own time. He was very interested, so. Yeah.
Be interesting to stuff it someday and see your design. The way Tim describes it, it sounds like it's pretty neat, something wonderful. Alrighty, uh, item J, garbage bids.
I'll make a motion to accept the garbage pickup and disposal bid from Waste Management. Or I just say the money?
No, I think.
I'll second.
Alrighty, a motion from Ms. Yuska, second from Ms. Payet to accept the bid for the garbage pickup and disposal from Waste Management. Do you have the numbers in front of you for the next, and that's a three-year contract? Any questions? Other than the fact that it's interesting that the higher bidder goes up each year and the one who's getting it goes up, down and a little back up. That's interesting.
I can shed light on that.
Oh, please do.
Crestwood, Pleasantville and Spring Valley are dropped off next year and the following year, so that explains the decrease. The high bidder did not decrease nearly as much. The health of the horse free.
Actually, they went up. Alrighty.
Who was the contractor last?
Waste Management.
So it was a three-year bid, that's why I can't remember doing it before.
Yes.
Any other questions? Well, let's do roll call of the margins since we're spending money.
Danny Payet?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Meehan?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Mary Nuko?
Yes.
And Mike Holden?
Yes.
Item K, new hires.
What's the tech one?
I move the board approve the following new hires, Daniel Cox, four K, early childhood, forty-one thousand dollars. Jason Lambert, second grade at East, fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Christopher Barry, cross categorical at East, fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars plus two thousand dollars. Benjamin Kessler, math teacher at high school for forty-four thousand five hundred dollars plus two thousand dollars. Brittany Hammond, English teacher at middle school, thirty-eight thousand. And Megan Murphy, school psychologist, sixty-three thousand dollars. Support staff as follows, Deborah Vanorkan, library clerk, full-time, for dollars and ninety-three cents. Melissa Zankowski, special ed, IAFD, thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Trisha Majewski, food service, full-time, thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Dawn Liz, food service, full-time, thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Catherine White, food service, part-time, ten dollars and thirty-seven cents. Tracy Percy, special ed, IA, part-time, thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Deborah Vanorkan, food service, part-time, nine dollars and seventy-one cents. And Andrea Pippe, regular ED, IA, interpreter, twenty-one dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion from Dr. Deep, second from Ms. Yuska. Any questions on any of these?
What's the plus two thousand dollars on those, on the?
I have a bonus value.
Signing bonuses?
It is. What is it? It's like a signing bonus or an incentive. And my fear is that as we get further away or further into Act Ten, you know, this is becoming the norm. So teachers now can negotiate, if you will, between districts. In fact, Heidi just locked in a school psychologist who hopefully can be on, oh, she is up here. We squeaked her in today.
No, he's good.
But it took, I mean, Heidi, we worked with her well over a week on negotiating. And sometimes it's the difference between a candidate, you know, signing and not, so. And what, what helps with that incentive then, or signing bonuses, it's one-time money and it doesn't continually ruin the salary, so.
And we're kind of in the corner too, where we know you'll see the signing, sign-on bonuses later for positions that we couldn't fill.
Couldn't write.
So we don't have much of a choice. Well, and you're starting to see it more and more in business. Well, I mean, I've seen advertisements for one of our local businesses for anywhere from a two thousand to five thousand dollar signing bonus, just to get people to work, so. It's understandable with the current climate, so.
Can you clarify, what did you say Andrea Pippe, because I couldn't open it, what did you say Andrea Pippe was hired as?
Twenty-one dollars.
No, but did you, I couldn't remember her position when you said it, it didn't sound right, but.
Okay, is there an interpreter?
She's an interpreter, okay, it did say deaf interpreter, okay, I just thought I heard something else. She doesn't say D H H.
I A, I A is measured.
I don't know, that's good enough, but I mean, she's there for a deaf, she's there for a deaf student. So I mean, she's hired as a, especially.
Well, if you want, if you want to put that in there, I don't have a problem to approve it then. You just read up what was in there.
Um, how many hours? Andrea, no, she's full-time. She just doesn't take benefits of her salary. I mean, that's more than an instructional, instructional assistant, isn't it? Yeah, because she has to have, she has a degree in sign. Right, so that should come out of there and put deaf.
But is she technically an instructional assistant slash interpreter?
I'm not sure how she's coded, Tim, in there. We pay her outside of the, I mean, it's not.
We don't issue her a contract. She's on, my understanding, she's on hourly basis, like other support staff.
Whatever he says.
So it's, it's, it sounds like it's coded the right way here, so. Alrighty.
Yeah, the three support staff that weren't hiring full-time before, including Andrea, are they replacing somebody else that was full-time?
Which ones were, can you name the ones that are full-time?
A library clerk, yes, is replacing Bart Brown, who was at Dart.
And she was full-time.
Correct. Heidi, you have to tell about who was.
Melissa Genjikowski. She is replacing Eisen.
Jim Eisen.
Eisen, Jim Eisen. He retired and he was an instructional assistant, so she's replacing him full-time, yes. And then who's the other? Trisha's in food service.
Food service.
No.
Did we, was Cory, I know we got a resignation from someone, I don't know.
I know we have an upcoming retirement, Andy, of a full-time position.
Oh, yeah, that lady, Kathy Straw or something like that.
Oh, yes, she told me that.
She will see that and the resignation.
Yeah, but wasn't she food service? Yes, yeah, so that's probably where we have our.
So we get the new hires first, then we're going to get next to the re-resignations slash returns or whatever, so. Let me clarify this on the next couple minutes here. So, any other questions on the new hires? Hearing the, uh, let's do roll call.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Good.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Meehan?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Mary Nuko?
Yes.
Danny Payet?
Yes.
Mike Holden?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Now, on to resignations and we want to promote, please.
I move the board accept the resignations as follows, Mark Ziegler, tech support specialist at the Anago High School, effective eight thirty-one eighteen. Tabitha Shaw, grade six, language arts teacher at AMS, effective immediately. Kathy Straw, kitchen cook assistant at AMS, effective nine fourteen eighteen. Cory Holmes, lunch assistant at AMS, effective eight three eighteen. Craig Furch, psychologist, effective immediately. And Dan Chandler, math teacher at AHS, effective immediately, as presented.
Andy, you see that biologic thing?
Noel Deeb.
Do we need a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, the motion was by Mr. Mary, second by Mr. Payet. It's now a discussion.
So to answer Jeanne's question, the only one asking for a waiver of the.
Mrs. Shaw.
Right, an additional penalty, right, is Tabitha Shaw. Okay, how much is the penalty now?
Thousand dollars.
A thousand?
Yep. And she did, I think Noel, that may be incorrect.
I think it's quite more than that.
I think it's twenty-five hundred because she received it after July.
It's in the letter that she provided, it said, I am assessed a financial penalty of thousand dollars for terminating my contract.
She got it in before June third, July thirtieth, that's correct.
Oh, so it is only a thousand. If it's after July thirteenth, July thirtieth, it's a twenty-five hundred.
Correct.
So even though you're talking about this evening, she did resign effectively.
Correct.
Before that date.
And she went, she was going to stay here, but decides she can't be away from family, right?
Yeah, well, she got a baby and a toddler. And it sounded kind of like he already left and they tried this Shaboy and Anago thing and it didn't work.
Yeah, because I think they're going to be like one in three or something like that.
So you have to amend the motion to leave her off if you wanted to enforce the penalty, is that correct? Or could you go add?
Yeah, we should probably address that one separately. Or you don't think so?
So the penalty is.
The motion was resignation as presented. She has resigned.
And she presented it asking to have that waived.
Oh, so you're saying you waived it with your motion?
Yeah.
I took it the other way. I took it the other way. But I guess you're right.
Yeah, 'cause she didn't.
She presented it, so. She just asked to have it waived, it's not saying we are going to waive it.
No, with her letter.
As her letter, he's, you're saying.
I'm saying, I accepted the resignations as presented, and in her resignation, she asked to have waived.
So they'll be approved, not charging for the thousand-dollar fee.
That was overly clever. I'll rescind my second to that motion, because I think a contract is a contract, and we need to stick with contracts, or this is gonna be a slippery slope in the future.
But we've done that in the past.
But you gotta start somewhere. You wrote your own second. Well, the le, the letter does state, and I'll just read it right straight from here. Due to these factors, I believe the reasoning behind the early termination of my contract is unique, and therefore it hopes it, it will allow you to exercise latitude in regards to whether or not I have assessed a penalty, financial penalty of one thousand dollars for terminating my contract for the 2018-2019 school year. It's our latitude.
I guess I'll second the motion, Mr. Deep.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I, you know, I have a problem with trying to collect this, because we've already set a precedent of not collecting.
Well, then we shouldn't have it at all.
Um, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
And I think that precedent was set not with Dr. Tim, but with, did we collect a fee from Tina?
We, uh.
Yeah, and I think it, you know, just from a morale issue, if we don't collect it from administrators and then we try to collect it from teachers, I don't see the fairness in that. And I also don't see the fairness in trying to collect a twenty-five hundred dollar, um, penalty from a teacher who makes, I assume Tabitha's making about forty thousand dollars, um, which is about six, more than six percent of her income. And then from an administrator, we would only collect two percent if we collect it.
I understand your point of view, but also those are in there for a reason, that if you abolish that, people could just walk up at the last minute, and it also, like Dr. Sprague just mentioned, we had to give to people sign-on bonuses, okay? And because it was at the last minute, and you're trying to find a qualified candidate to fill that void that was created by someone leaving at the last minute. So I see it as point of view, where a contract is a contract. If you hold people to the spirit of the letter as written, then you should not void your contract until and unless you're dying, right? There's something that literally is forcing your hands, that you cannot carry on that job responsibility. And if you have a plan in place that your family is moving, then you could have probably thought about doing it at the same time. You could have done your resignation at the end of the previous school year. So, I'm, I'm okay with waiving it, but I think from now onwards, if we have to present a view for the staff that, you know, would not condone such behavior. So maybe we need to be very careful and hope you, um, display your leniency in these situations.
Maybe we should look at the amount.
Yeah, but maybe we need to be realistic about what this penalty is. I, I mean, I think it's ironic that Tina Braggin was the one who said, "Let's have this twenty-five hundred dollar, um, penalty." Except for me.
Well, and we didn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can think of in very recent history, an administrator that left under great duress, and at that time, there was one board member who was very adamant that that individual paid a penalty, and he didn't. So it's, it's not a matter of that we haven't done this in the past, we have, but we've also done it both ways.
We haven't done it consistently, and I, I think, to your point, Noel, we should have something that is consistent, but it ought to be realistic.
I agree completely, then. Either, either you have a dollar amount, or you have a percentage of their income, because you brought up the issue of percentage. So if you feel that it is not fair to have administrator only pay one percent or two percent, then maybe when you drop their contracts in the future, and if you feel that three percent or five percent should be appropriate for everyone, then maybe that's how the board and your HR personnel should drop the contracts in the future.
Or maybe we should do two percent instead of a flat fee?
That's what I'm saying.
What are you gonna do also?
There were flat fees assessed, and they were, um, now I'm guessing, but far more often than not, they were imposed. Were they like this amount?
Mm-hmm.
I think for administrators, it was higher, though, um, I wanna say three or three thousand or so.
And what do those people, um, like, like if it was a teacher in her position, what is, what is the average teacher paying at that position just as here? Because, I mean, maybe there should be compensation.
I would say it's comparable, you know, we're gonna be, the disparity between the two salary schedules is not so great that, that flat number is, it's reasonable to what's.
And Dr. Sprague, I recall that we did a survey of local, um, that is your turn. Local districts on what they were doing. And, um, so our liquidated damages is very similar to what our neighbor, some of them are more, some of them are less.
The other thing I would offer is sometimes, oh, I'm sorry, Jessica, that it is negotiated. So if you have, you can call it a signing bonus, or sometimes people say, "I would need you, my incoming district, to pay my liquidated damages at my last."
Okay.
So that's becoming frequent as well.
Jessica.
So I think Tina discussed that it was, I mean, some of it was for the reasoning of trying to find somebody at last minute, and, but, like, I, I personally think we should revisit it, 'cause I think it's ineffective. I mean, do you think that Tabitha was like, "This is gonna make or break me"? I'm sure she's asking, because it's nothing she had planned on, and she also mentions, you know, gaps in co, in compensation. But I, I don't find it effective. We, we're looking at this like all the time, and people are going to leave regardless, and then they get sign-on bonuses.
That's what I'm saying, if, if there is a case of life and death, or some major family situation or something that prompts you to leave at the last minute, breaking your contract, those are situations that you could probably look at and say, now, if somebody is leaving because their parent or loved one is terminally ill or something that they want to take care of them, do you want to impose this penalty on them in that situation? You're already dealing with a devastating situation. But if you have somebody who, you know, you wait until almost the beginning of the school year, knowing fully well that this is a possibility, you entertain it, and you spring it on as of the last minute, which causes undue anguish to the board, and, you know, you're, you're entering into a school year where your students may not have that teacher, then you, you also don't want that situation to develop, where people could think that, that the board is always leaning, they'll let me go.
Heidi, that clip, go.
Um, I was just gonna say, this happened to me in Ryan Leonard, and think about it this way, um, 'cause I left in October, five years ago, and they assessed me my liquidated damages, and I tried to get out of it, as anybody would, and they said, "No, you're gonna pay it." Um, and then they tried to accrue actual damages. And if you think, like, because they had to go and find somebody, liquidated damages are so you don't go for actual, so it's not about, is it effective or not? It is about the district's responsibility then, to cover the cost of subs and trying to find somebody. So it's, you gotta kinda think of it that way. And I, I looked into the law, because I'm like, you can't do both. You can do one, or you can do the other. You can, you can say twenty-five hundred dollars for my liquidated damages, or you can try to assess me actual cost, but you can't do both, and I was right. So I'm just trying to get you to think about it. It's not about a penalty on them, it's about to make up for what the district is losing.
Clint, your turn, you had your hand up.
I agree with Dr. Deep and Heidi. They, they made my points.
Wait, so your point is it forces?
Well, the, you know, and it, and it happened at, at the high school, most recently in, with one of our teachers in the math department, and it, it is a struggle to find quality candidates. And I, I am in favor of, uh, assessing those damages, because I, I think that we need to, we need to try to recoup something with that. And it, it is about what, what the district is losing, because we put money into those people.
Okay. Let me, let me make a suggestion to the board here in this instance. As far as the motion goes, it's, at this point, it's to accept the resignation. There is a possibility, I believe, that we could enter a second motion that would cover the monetary penalty portion of this, and we can complete that after the original motion. Does that sound feasible to the board?
Yes.
So basically, yeah, basically, with, with the motion as it is currently structured, we're just saying that we agree to accept the resignations. Subsequent to that, there would be a second motion that would come up about waiving the monetary penalty, specifically for Mrs. Shaw.
Do you wanna recognize that, oh, or earth?
No, we are, we are only going to vote on accepting the resignations. That would not include the request to waive the.
The request, the penalty would be in a separate motion.
Right. That's not part of.
But then you're gonna draw more attention to it, if, if we, if we let it fly, if we, if we do it according, then we're.
Then, then you can exclude that one candidate and vote on the others, and then vote on that particular candidate with that provision, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, it encompasses the single.
Right. Either, either way, that person will be singled out.
Right.
Or you can single out each person, too. And, and let me remind you that when we were doing some of the hires last month, that we did single out one individual because of a conflict that one of the board members had with that one. And so that person was singled out as well, so this is, this is not new territory, folks.
I was just saying, if, do we wanna draw attention to it if we're approving, if we're gonna let her not have to pay the thousand dollars?
So be it, if we do. You know, we're all dealt here, we gotta figure it out at some point, so. Any further discussion on the resignations? We do have a motion for Mr. Mary. Mr. Pyatt withdrew his second, but we did receive a second from Mr. Schrader. So we have motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we would be looking for a second motion. What?
You didn't ask for any objections.
Anybody abstain?
You're voting for.
You're voting for to approve, to accept all resignations. Okay, now we would be looking for a separate motion in regards to waiving the monetary penalty for Mrs. Shaw.
What if you only charged her a thousand eighty? Would that feel like an acceptable compromise to you?
That's all.
Oh, I thought it was twenty-five hundred, you're right, sorry, sorry. You didn't, I forgot.
Nobody pro?
Yeah. Okay, we're looking for motion, please.
I'll make a motion to whatever we're doing, except waiving the monetary penalty for the contract for Tabitha Shaw.
Either to, is either to waive it, or to not accept the waiver, or to reduce or.
What are you making?
I can't do it then, because there's way too much talk, and I don't know what I'm doing.
Okay.
I thought we were, I thought we were voting to waive her penalty.
Correct.
Or you could also do it.
Don't talk, because this is my very first time of dumbness.
If you're making the motion to waive the penalty, that'll be your motion.
Isn't that what we, nod your head if you guys think that's, that's what, okay.
Okay, your motion is to waive the penalty.
To waive the penalty for Tabitha Shaw.
I'll second.
The monetary penalty, yes.
Now, the motion on the floor then is to waive the monetary penalty. So in other words, we're gonna say where she does not have to pay. Alright, any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay. Let, we're gonna do this then, we're gonna do, let's do roll call. This is to approve the motion to waive the penalty. If you vote aye, you're in favor of it. If you vote no, you're against.
Keep the penalty.
Schrader?
I'm gonna have a statement for the moment.
Jeanie Long?
No.
Jessica Mead?
No.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
No.
Mary Nukow?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
No.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Mike Holding?
No.
What was it, what's it called?
Do you vote yes or no?
Can I just abstain, absolutely? I really don't know the answer, I'm doing that.
If you wanna abstain, you can abstain.
I'll abstain.
Okay, in that case, the motion carries, or the motion is defeated five to three with one abstention, so the penalty, monetary penalty will stay. There. Yes. Mike, would this be a good time to ask Tim or Melody, Dr. Sprague, to come up with some type of plan that we don't have to?
I think that is a point that would be good for discussion.
For committee of the whole, maybe?
For the committee of the whole, and a topic that we could put on one of our upcoming agendas, so that we come up with a plan that we can stick with.
That's right, that's Mr. Grass's first project.
Alrighty, and, uh, the last item in board action tonight will be donations, so we will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board accept the following donations. One thousand from Tim and Rose Prunkie for the Nabokin School Forest. One thousand from Dan and Diane Kreutz for the Nabokin School Forest. Two hundred dollars from the Anago House Lodge, number six-six-two, for Phila Backpack. Twenty-five thousand from an anonymous donor for the Nabokin School Forest. Two hundred fifty dollars from Covantage for Phila Backpack. Hundred twenty-five dollars from the St. Joseph's Holy Family Council for Phila Backpack. Two hundred dollars from Johnson Coyle for Phila Backpack. Totalling donations of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion, I just, second from Ms. Pyatt. On the anonymous donation, that was in honor of Gordian Gloria Schofield.
Wow. In honor of, so someone put it in their name, how nice.
That's cool.
You can add that to the line.
Thank you, I think, yeah. Thank you, Tim, for bringing that up, that's nice. Alrighty.
How did Phila Backpack go? Good turnout? It's over, is it?
Backpacks? He had just been in over four hundred and thirty, four hundred and forty. We have still about a dozen in the middle school office with names on them. A couple moms just picked them up today that they had set aside, so definitely a need. Good turnout.
That's great.
Community support for that has always been, and it's wonderful to see this kind of community support as well. So, uh, we have a motion on the floor to accept the donations.
I'll second.
We have a second.
Oh, we do have a second?
Yep, Ms. Reed and Mr. Pyatt took care of the busy work. We just have one other thing to say. All those in favor of accepting the donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. We thank our generous community for their unselfishness, and Mr. Prunkie, as I should have told you earlier, a very nice, you and, um, your fellow Nabokin folks, doing what you do.
Keith, is it St. Joseph's that high? What is St. Joseph's? I should have asked in the discussion.
Motion for Mr. Pyatt, your turn, second from Ms. Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?